I'm going to call this meeting of Thursday, July 29, 2021, a special session of the Ann Arbor City Council. If the clerk could help us with a call to order, I would appreciate that. Or sorry, the reading of the order and notice of a call to special session.
Notice is hereby given that an electronic special session of the city of Ann Arbor City Council will be held Thursday, July 29, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. for the following purpose. To hold a closed session under the Michigan Open Meetings Act 15.268-H for attorney-client written communications of legal advice.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. If you are able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If the clerk could please call the rule of counsel.
Councilmember Hayner?
Here.
Councilmember Dish? I see Councilmember Dish has just arrived. Councilmember Griswold?
Here from Ann Arbor.
Thank you. Councilmember Song?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Grand?
Here from Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Redina?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Mayor Taylor, absent. Councilmember Ayer?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Ramloey?
Present in Ann Arbor.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Moved by Councilmember Redina, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. All in, any discussion? All in favor? It is approved. Okay, we are, could I have a motion to go into closed session under the Michigan Open for Attorney-client Privilege Communications as set forth or incorporated in MCLA 15.268? Oh.
15.268.
I wanted to say that I'm present attending from Chicago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Okay, I see moved by Councilmember Redina. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Do we have any discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ramloey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayner?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor, absent. Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We will see you on the other side.
Session. We're now coming to public comment general time. Public comment general time is an opportunity to hear from members of the public regarding matters of municipal interest. You do not need to sign up in advance for public comment general time. If you wish to join us for public comment, please look at the numbers on your screen. You should call 877-853-5247. That's 877-853-5247 and then enter the meeting ID 94212732148. That's meeting ID 94212732148. If you would like to indicate your wish to speak during public comment, please press star nine and the clerk will identify you when it's your turn by the last three digits of your phone number. So I will move things over to the clerk. Thank you.
Molly Kleinman, do you have a comment?
I do. Thank you. Hello, council members. My name is Molly Kleinman. I live in Ward four and I'm calling because in the summer of 2020, the city of Ann Arbor made declarations supporting anti-racism, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and began flying a Black Lives Matter flag. However, several instances over the past several months have demonstrated that racism, sexism, and homophobia are still alive and well within the Ann Arbor City government. Our government urgently needs to prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion among existing staff and in new staff being hired. Given that the city administrator position, one of the most powerful roles in the city government, is now open, it's critical that the hiring process take an explicitly community-led and anti-racist, anti-oppression focus in hiring a new administrator. It's critical that the new administrator is hired with community input and a transparent process and that candidates have the knowledge and skills to help the city live up to our values. The next city administrator should have a demonstrated commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion and anti-racism. They should have a record of recruiting, hiring, and leading diverse teams, and a commitment to transparency, accountability, and engagement with the community. Because of the recent instances of racism and homophobia within our community and our government, it's also crucial that the hiring process includes and consults with members of historically excluded communities, including Black, Indigenous, and other residents of color and LGBTQ plus residents. If we hope to live up to our stated values of inclusion, equity, and justice, we must have an inclusive, equity, and justice-focused hiring process for the city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the phone number ending in 123, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Yes, Rick Whitten, Ward one. On July 20th, the council members, Radina Grand, Iyer, and others indicated their concern that city employees must feel welcome in the workplace and that they need to feel safe to bring forward issues they have with leadership. These are real and laudable concerns. The goal of diversity, equity, and inclusion is to create a safe and professional space for all and thereby to broaden the diversity of the workforce. By having more perspectives at the table, solutions to our community's problems will be better and more inclusive. It also must be acknowledged that where there are differences in cultural, racial, and other lived experiences, opportunities for misunderstanding and unintentional hurt increase as well. Unintentional harm is virtually unavoidable as diversity increases, so it can actually be a sign of progress. To be clear, discrimination and harassment are not to be tolerated, and I'm not talking about discrimination and harassment. I'm referring to insensitive, odd, or cringe-worthy comments that are reflective of outdated gender norms or even implicit biases, which is to say exactly what the independent investigation of Mr. Crawford concluded. The goal of DEI cannot be both diversity and zero conflict because diversity breeds conflict. The question is, how is conflict handled? To be successful with DEI, the city must be able to process conflict with respect and humanity. There must be an emphasis on learning, growth, and reconciliation. In his remarkable response to the report, Mr. Crawford laid out a plan to accomplish just that. This council has chosen zero tolerance for cringe-worthy and outdated comments. That is a recipe for stilted and contrived environments, an environment based on the fear of the other rather than community and understanding. Terminating the employment of Administrator Crawford is not just a terrible decision for the workplace culture at City Hall, it's a terrible decision for the future of our city, the very thing this council has a responsibility to protect. Tom Crawford is uniquely qualified and gifted in the very skills our city desperately needs. He is leading numerous projects and initiatives that will suffer greatly from his absence. I wonder if our new council members, eight months into the job, have any appreciation of the harm their decision will cause. Council claims their hands are tied, but that is a dishonest characterization of both the report and the policy.
Thirty seconds.
Ann Arbor, the majority of this council and the mayor are choosing to throw the city into turmoil. They are choosing to tarnish our reputation by firing the second administrator in three years. They are choosing to put us through another lengthy and expensive search process, one that is guaranteed to result in a less capable, less knowledgeable, less dedicated administrator than Mr. Crawford. What this council is choosing to do to this city and that good man is shameful.
Thank you. Caller with the phone running in 952, press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, I've known Mr. Crawford for almost 20 years. The pronouns that some of you have on your screens right now were not used 20 years ago. Mr. Crawford is one of the most conscientious people I have met in my life. I heard from a couple of council members the last time that you voted and I was blown away by how highly they spoke of him and some of the people that didn't stand up for him and seemed to follow the cult of personality versus the dedication that he has demonstrated over the years. His multiple times stepped in and not only completed his role as CFO, but also as interim manager. He has worked extremely hard. He has also changed over the years, just like you would expect any good human to do. None of us are perfect. I agree with the comments that were stated in the last meeting on this and also the comments that were just stated now. To expect somebody to be perfect and to not give them the opportunity to improve themselves and have a one and done mentality is harmful. Our political environment already is extremely divisive and you are adding to that divisiveness instead of the inclusion that I heard multiple council members talk about Mr. Crawford promoting over the years. The investigation, from what I read, did not call for his termination and yet you hastily rushed to terminate a man that came up with a plan of how to make things better and how to take responsibility for his actions, something that we rarely see in this day and age right now. In fact, there's a council member, upper right-hand corner of my screen right now, that refuses to take accountability for her previous actions.
Thirty seconds.
So I find it very interesting that So I find it very interesting that with how I have seen him grow over the years and the past administrators that I have seen for the city and what you have let some of them get away with, that there is a um a definite bias against Mr. Crawford, who is an excellent man, and I agree with Councilman Nelson, who said whoever gets them in their organization will be very lucky. And I feel unfortunate for this to be at Ann Arbor.
Eric Zekbar, do you have a comment?
Yeah, uh, this is Eric from Ward two. I'm just calling to say I am disappointed as well that we're going through this process. Uh, I'm not disappointed, I don't think, for the same reasons that the previous caller is. I do think that with Mr. Crawford's letter, that it's a good sign that he was able to recognize the faults uh, once others and multiple others had to point them out to him. And that I do hope that his words and commitment to better himself is genuine. Uh, unfortunately for our city, I don't think that it would be appropriate for us to allow him to remain the city manager going forward. Uh, given the multiple reports of his conduct and given the fact that multiple staff members said that they could not see a way going forward to work under him, keeping him in the position would have been too toxic. And so while I do appreciate his remorse and his uh personal accountability, um, that it's something that is laudable, uh, I don't think that leaving him in position would have been the correct course of action. So I'm sad to see him go. I do wish him the best going forward, but I don't see any other way going forward for our city. We have to, uh, as the first caller said, begin our process for the search for the next city manager in an open, equitable, inclusive way. We have to bring forward commit uh community members that are uh frequently sidelined as they have been in previous conversations about who should lead our city. We have to bring all of them to the table and try to figure out how we can move forward rather than work with a revolving door in city government. Somebody who staff members can appreciate working with, with a vision for change and inclusivity. Uh, somebody who's not going to make other people feel unwelcome on city staff. So I do wish him the best going forward. I, I hope that we are able to heal as a community through the next process that we have searching for a new visionary city manager and administrator. And I'm starting to see that we are in this situation, uh, again, so soon after the last HR manager's unfortunate remarks. So hopefully we can get to a place uh beyond this as a city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in five, three, four, do you have a comment? Press star six, unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Tom Stalberg, calling from Ann Arbor. Spoiler alert, I will be attacked on social media for what I say tonight. A second spoiler alert, I'm gonna finish by calling for Mayor Taylor's resignation. We have an absolute collapse in leadership, Ann Arbor government. It's time for Mayor Taylor to accept responsibility for that and to resign. Do you know, I've been called a Nazi online in all caps. The person didn't understand that Stalberg is Jewish. It is German, but it's also Jewish. That's ancient history. Let me give you some recent history. I've been speaking up about lies and hate that's been spewed by people aligned with the mayor on social media. And in response to that, I, people have doubled down and attacked me further on social media. I also received a threatening phone call last week. Yes, I have a witness. It can be verified. What are we devolving into? I'm not just talking about myself, we're seeing what's going on citywide. We're seeing this division, this divisiveness, this hate, these lies spreading throughout social media from one person to another, from one group to another. We see what's going on with our city administrator situation. We see what's going on between council members. Things have not gotten better with the change in the last election, things have gotten worse. We have a leader in our city. His name is Chris Taylor, he's our mayor. This all lies at his feet. Mayor Taylor, if you're listening to this, please resign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in nine, three, six, do you have a comment? Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello. Um, so I, I do wanna touch on um city administrator uh decision. And it's a tough time for the city. It's a tough, um, it's not something that I think anybody uh on council really wanted to have to do this, but I read through the report and um the, the independent report and after um reading through all that, this is the correct decision. We have to um make sure that Ann Arbor is welcoming for everyone. Um, I wanted to talk about a couple other things. Um, I, I would like um you to think about, talk about, hopefully just do this. Uh, make right turns on red, um, just ban them um all throughout downtown campus area. Um, last Saturday, I nearly got hit again by a car. I did get hit a couple months ago by a car um right in front of Literati. This time it was on Fifth and Catherine um during farmer's market hours. This time the, the driver, you know, came inches within and then rolled down his window and did apologize to me. So that, um, but again, I'm, I'm six, five. Um, you know, if it's a shorter person or a kid in the crosswalk there, um, chances of serious injury and death uh increase. And I don't want this to get to a situation where uh we have somebody die, you know, get struck by a car and killed by a driver. Um, and then, then you talk about um banning right turns on red. Um, you know, please, let's not have that happen. Let's, let's save lives um before it gets to that point. And the other thing I wanna bring up is um how the city can do more outreach to students. Um, we did a lot during the twenty twenty election, and I'm wondering if um the uh clerk's office can continue to strengthen the partnerships with the university to um you know, work with different student organizations to, to invite them into having a say in our city government and to make information available to students. Um, and I would like uh reform to the elections um to be through approval voting. Um, I do not wanna go to nonpartisan elections. Um, but I do uh want approval voting, and if that's something we can do, please look into it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grand, I don't see any other callers with their hands.
If anyone else wishes to speak, could they please, please press star nine now? Okay, it looks like we have one more.
Brandon Dimshoff, do you have a comment?
Hi, yeah, um, this is Brandon Dimshoff from the fourth ward. Um, I just wanna say that I think nobody is happy to be in the position that we're in right now with respect to the city administrator. Uh, and I want to thank council for their work handling this difficult issue. I'm sure everyone uh would rather be working on policy. Um, I'll also say that I wish we could approach disagreements with facts and sound arguments instead of innuendo and suggestions of conspiracy. And I appreciate those council members who have shared what facts they can without wild speculation and unfounded accusations. Um, I would also ask those on and off of council who are peddling conspiracy theories for political gain to consider that these theories are harmful to staff and the community at large. Um, we have a lot of work ahead of us, let's not make it harder on ourselves. Uh, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in two, three, seven, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Hello, council, hello, council members. Uh, I'd like to point out to you and everyone listening, um, my thoughts on this. There was an investigation with Mr. Crawford. Uh, the third party that you hired did not recommend firing. They submitted a report that recommended that he get a three hundred and sixty evaluation on his next review. The uh recommendation to hire, fire him came from the majority of the council members. Mr. Crawford has a sixteen year track record of impeccable public service. He has a record of complete inclusiveness. He has successfully steered our city through very difficult financial times and did a great job of navigating us through the pandemic. On the record, we have hearsay comments that Tom has denied, and some staff brought forth this complaint. Um, and yet he has this sixteen year reputation, and he's helped hundred and, and perhaps even thousands of people. And those people would definitely testify to his character and argue for him. The action to remove him was very abrupt and provided him no second chance. You threw the baby out with the bathwater. You were faced with a challenge and a climate that is very politically sensitive, and you chose not to work through it. The revolving door of this city continues. This council is very dysfunctional, you need to look at yourselves. Most politicians, uh, including some of you on the council, do things for the betterment of yourself. You're attracted to power and you wield lies to accomplish your objectives. This is how most politicians thrive and maintain power. I consider Mr. Crawford to be an exception for this. His past actions and reputation as someone who tries to do the right thing without regard for himself. Your consequences of firing him will be that that next person will be a great politician rather than someone that will do the right thing. I wanna suggest two things and conclude. I wanna suggest that the reasons for his vote go beyond the report and that they're motivated by personal and political agendas. Uh, I also wanna point out that Tom has acknowledged some of his comments, put them in perspective, apologized, owned it, and proposed a plan to improve the sensitivity. Um, we all should be so lucky to have a leader like that. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wishes to speak, could you please press star nine?
Caller with the phone number ending in three, four, zero, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Uh, greetings, uh, city council, uh, during this special session. My name is Luis Vasquez, I'm a resident of the first ward. Um, and just wanted to comment about uh the recent decision to um sever with uh Mr. Crawford. I know it was a very difficult decision uh to make. But um, in my opinion, having read the investigator's report, I could, I can see no other uh conclusion to make other than to uh act in uh severance um of Mr. Crawford from the city. Um, and you know, we'll, we'll all deal with the repercussions of uh that decision. Um, and but uh like some of the previous callers, I hope that uh we have a good, transparent process going forward in hiring a new city administrator. Um, and I, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of um shocked by some of what I've been reading on uh social media and uh including Elizabeth Nelson's blog, uh, which uh in this instance is filled with um speculation and innuendo, and I think that's totally uncalled for. Um, and I wish Elizabeth Nelson, I wish she would stop doing that. Um, um, but also, you know, seeing on some of the social media, um, Mr. Former council member, Mr. Councilman um is uh in, in some ways practically urging uh Mr. Crawford to sue the city. Well, um, this is why Mr. Councilman is no longer a councilman. Um, it's things like that, uh, and those kind of sentiments, which really have no place um in our city. Um, so uh with that, uh, thank you very much for your time and attention and uh in making the difficult decisions that you have to make sometimes. Uh, and I wish us all the best in Ann Arbor going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. It appears that we have no more callers. If anyone wishes to speak, please press star nine. Okay, thank everyone for their participation. Are there any communications from council? Councilmember Song.
Uh, I wanna speak a little bit to um some of the work that's been, that's being done between city schools and uh our county commissioners in, in addressing the childcare issue, the before and after care childcare dilemma that uh many of our community members are facing. Um, and the school board has advised us to wait for an announcement tomorrow. And um, I'm really looking forward to the ongoing work and partnership that we, that all of our entities are, are putting forth um in making sure that children are, are safe and cared for. Uh, and I wanna thank Councilmember Julie Grand and her efforts with our parks. Um, with our park staff and trying to see if we can establish some programming and addressing some of that aftercare need. Um, and as well as thanks to our city staff to uh brainstorming how we can best, how we can also offer the use of our city buildings. Um, this, this dilemma, this, this issue has been long in coming and something that the schools have, have addressed uh in large part on their own, and it's, it's, it's a, I'm really pleased to see that this collaboration is beginning and, and look forward to this ongoing discussion so that we can make sure that um kids in the city uh are safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigs.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I wanted to, sounded like from public comment, there may have been a little bit of confusion about um the report that we received. I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity around the observations and recommendations component of that report, which um it was not, it um is my understanding, uh, typical for, for us to actually receive a recommendation around whether or not um, in this case, Mr. Crawford should have been terminated or not. They, um, the independent investigator looked to see if those observation, if the reports were credible and found that they were and provided some observations, but it was, it's up to us as a council body to then determine what to do with that information and to determine, um, you know, in, in my case, um, taking a look at whether or not, um, you know, what policies were violated, how that impacted our organization, impacts our staff, um, and aligns with our, with our community values and, and the ability for our community, for our administrator to lead effectively moving forward. Um, I would also like to take this moment to say how much I appreciate the bravery of staff that was willing to step forward and articulate um publicly to come forward and, and state concerns about what they were seeing within the organization. Um, that was very difficult and, um, and they put themselves in an uncomfortable position in bringing forward um complaints against, against their boss. Um, and I appreciate um the additional, um, the strain that the organization is under right now. Um, and so um, I hope that we can all as a community recognize um where the focus should be as we move forward. And that's in improving the health of our organization and aligning ourselves with our community values.
Thank you. Anyone else have comment this evening? Okay, I'd just like to take a minute to thank um Councilmember Song for her Herculean efforts with this um issue around childcare, um, as well as our, you know, folks at the county who've just been outstanding partners. It, it just takes a great deal of care and initiative to go after something that's not necessarily in our lane and, and look at the bottom line, which is that we have, you know, approximately a thousand children in our community who are going to be in need of care in just a few weeks' time and safety. And I, I truly appreciate those efforts. It's, it's tremendous. And anyway. So can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Councilmember Griswold, seconded by Councilmember Dish. All in favor? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Postama. Thank you, Jackie.